Good evening and welcome to the November 13, 2017, special meeting of the Mayor and City Council. First on our agenda is a motion to conduct a special session. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Gaithersburg conduct a special session tonight, Monday, November 13, 2017, solely to receive the certification of election results and swear in the newly-elected mayor and city council members. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously with 4-0. So, next on our agenda is the traditional beginning of our meeting, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite Jordan Monroe to come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge, if everyone can please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Jordan. Next, I would like to invite the Chair of our Board of Supervisors of Elections, Joan Moore, to the podium to present the certified official results.
Mayor Ashman and members of the City Council, the Board of Supervisors of Elections held a general election on November 7, 2017, for one four-year term of mayor and two four-year terms for the City of Gaithersburg Council. As you know, the City used AccuVote optical scanner voting equipment and paper ballots for the selection, and the Board was extremely pleased with how it worked. Results were double-checked. First, the optical scanner report tape was removed from each scanner and added manually. Second, the memory cards were consolidated and run through the tabulation software. Additionally, the Board determined 98 absentee ballots and 16 provisional ballots cast on Tuesday, November 7, were valid and should be included in the total vote. The Board certified and counted the ballots. Therefore, the electionary results were slightly different from the unofficial results released November 7, 2017. A total of 3,396 valid ballots were cast. The Board of Supervisors of Elections has certified that Judd Ashman as being elected as mayor for a four-year term. In addition, the Board of Supervisors of Elections has certified Loriann Sales and Micah A. Sesma
Thank you.
as being elected to the City Council for a four-year term each. Finally, the Board would like to thank all the staff and our election judges for conducting a very thorough and efficient election. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give the Board of Supervisors a great round of applause. You know, I'll take this moment just to point out that, you know, elections, no matter how smoothly you think they're going to run, there's always, there's always a build of tension and stress and emotion that sort of comes to a head, particularly in that last week. And our Board of Supervisors are to be commended for the job they did, and as well as our staff, led by Lynn Board and Lauren Klingler, who did just tremendous work, and all of the City Gaithersburg staff who supported our election. I sent a very lengthy email to all of our staff, congratulating them the day after the election in appreciation of their work. But I think our staff deserve a round of applause, too. Let's thank them. Perhaps the most difficult part of the evening for me is back in, as everyone knows, last year we tragically lost our colleague and friend, Henry Marafa, and we went through, we went through an extensive process in finding someone to appoint to serve the remainder of his term. We selected Yvette Monroe as of February of this year, and she's served with great love and distinction. And before her term ends this evening, I wanted to give her a chance while she's still at the DAAS to give some remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say, first of all, I'm going to miss this seat. I was honored to have been appointed to the City Council back in February, and it was the culmination of years of service in the community. And in the past nine months, I have learned a lot. I've experienced a lot. I've made a lot of new friends and connections, and I've contributed in ways I would never have imagined. I am most grateful, though, to my colleagues on the DAAS who expressed their faith in me by this appointment. So to Judd, and to Mike, and to Rob, and to Ryan, and to Neil, who's not here, hey Neil. I could not have asked for better mentors. I appreciate your wisdom, your patience. I appreciate your answering questions, guiding me through complex issues, and giving me a greater and ultimately wonderful understanding of the workings of municipal government. I intend to use that knowledge and as I continue to advocate within the Gaithersburg community. Can't get rid of me that quick. I would be remiss if I did not also acknowledge our junior mayor, Pirani Kanon. I appreciate working alongside of her, and I know that Gaithersburg is greater because of her presence in it, and she's going to be forced to be reckoned with in the years to come. I am also exceedingly grateful to the wonderful city staff without whom this city would not run. They are skilled, they are dedicated, they are compassionate, and they're tireless public servants. And we are very fortunate to have them and they to have our backs. I would like to congratulate Mayor Ashman and Councilmember Mike Sesma on their reelection. I extend my congratulations to Loriann Sales for her election to the City Council. I know that her energy to this community will serve her well in this position. I also would like to congratulate and acknowledge my fellow candidate and Philadelphian, Jim McNulty, for running a great campaign. He is an absolute asset to this community, and I look forward to working with him and all the other citizen advocates who make this such a great city. And if you would indulge me for just a little bit more, I need to express my sincere appreciation to my campaign team who supported me throughout the whole, my first election experience. It is not easy putting yourself out there, and all of these wonderful, faithful, dedicated people, my dear friends, helped me, guided me through it, and kept my energy up to the very end. And last, I need to thank my family. They are everything. I cannot even begin to tell you how much they put up with me in the last few months as I've pushed, been pushed and pulled in many directions. I love you so much, John, and Jordan, and Courtney, and I am so appreciative for their, just their love for me and their strength. And special thanks to my daughter, Jordan, who has traveled all over the county, in the city with me, driving me to countless meetings and events. I greatly appreciate you, and I love you so much. I hope they still like me, because I will be home a little bit more. Being a City Councilmember has given me such a great appreciation for those who choose to run for public office, for the staff that keeps the cogs of this city in excellent working condition, but most of all, to the residents of Gaithersburg. I met many of you, and I heard a lot of issues and concerns as I went door-to-door. Your opinions may differ, but I was so impressed by the common thread that I heard throughout listening to them. You are proud to live in this community, and this is a community that is collaborative. It's inviting, it's empathetic, and it's forward-thinking. And you're willing to work hard to preserve that. It takes all of us working together, the residents, the volunteers, staff, elected officials, everyone, to continue to make this city the greatest city in the world. My last one. So thank you for allowing me to be your City Councilmember. I now look forward to continuing my involvement with the city as a proud resident of Gaithersburg. Thank you.
All right. Well done, Yvette.
Thank you.
I have to compose myself, because I'm about to be sworn in. I would like to invite the Clerk of the Circuit Court, Barbara Micklejohn, to meet me up at the podium.
Have you raise your right hand? I'll say aye. You'll say aye in your name, and then continue to repeat after me.
Sure.
Aye?
Aye, Judd Ashman.
To solemnly swear?
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
That I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office?
Execute the office.
Of mayor of the City of Gaithersburg?
Of mayor of the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state?
And laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Dress?
No.
Okay. We're good with just the name.
We're good with just the name. We know where to find you.
Okay. Okay. Next, I would like to invite Loriann Sales, and I would also like to invite Loriann, if there are friends or family that you'd like to have with you for this swearing-in, please, you're welcome to. You're, you're-
Of course.
Yes, gather everybody, Loriann.
Well, I mean, I mean, as long as there's room. We've got a lot of sales force here. Yeah. Yeah, good. Okay. All right, so did you memorize that whole thing? All right. That's fine, because we're going to go slow, because it is a little clunky, and that's just the way our oath is. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to say aye, and then you say aye, and then your name. So aye?
Aye, Loriann Sales.
Do affirm?
Do affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I?
And that I?
Will be faithful?
Will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office?
Execute the office.
Of City Councilmember for the City of Gaithersburg?
Of City Councilmember of the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state?
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Congratulations. Mike Sesma, please join me. And I'd like, Mike, please invite anybody you'd like to have with you.
There's one person who needs to be with me. Anybody else that wants to join?
At this point, you pretty much know the drill. Okay. Aye?
Aye, Michael A. Sesma.
Do affirm?
Do affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office?
Execute the office.
Of City Councilmember of the City of Gaithersburg?
Of City Councilmember of the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state?
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code?
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Congratulations. All right, well done. Thank you. Okay. Now I'm going to invite the council members to make statements. I will note that our colleague Neil Harris would have definitely liked to have been here, but he's sick this evening and has been sick for about a week now. So we hope, we wish him well. But we're just going to go, uh...
Sorry.
What am I, am I missing something here?
Mike is taking a selfie.
As if he hasn't been here before.
Okay.
Okay, well done. We're going to start with our newest council member, Loriann Sales.
All right. Good evening, Gaithersburg.
Good evening.
I just want to take a moment and just thank God first and foremost. I know that none of this would have been possible without the prayers, the support, and the upbringing that I was raised with. All of the people that encouraged me along the way, hydrated me while I was walking in the heat, prayed for me, informed me, hosted meet-and-greets, donated to the campaign, wrote and sent out neighbor-to-neighbor letters, made calls, knocked on doors, worked at the polling places in the pouring rain, the frigid cold, voted, told other people to vote, believed in the campaign, supported and endorsed the campaign, and most importantly, believed in me. Thank you to my husband, Julian, who couldn't be here with us this evening. His mother got married, so... So this is the one excuse he gets. Thank you to my daughter, Michaela, who also couldn't be here with me because she's at school in Tennessee. Hopefully, she's watching. She told me she'd be tuning in. I love you, and I hope this is, continues to be a point of inspiration for you as you continue on your journey. She said she would never pursue a life in public service, but we will see in a few years. I'd also like to thank them, my husband and my daughter, for sharing me with the community, walking alongside me, pushing me and supporting me with very little complaints. I really appreciate you, and I love you. Prayers and scriptures motivated me to do more than my body thought I could. I'm no stranger to hard work, so I'd like to thank my parents for instilling tenacity and a strong work ethic in me and my siblings. I have four siblings, five, four siblings, four sisters and one brother, and I'm glad that at least some of them could join me this evening. We'll celebrate this weekend at the upcoming wedding. We don't give up, so rest assured, Gaithersburg. I'm ready to get to work, and I won't give up on you. To my campaign coordinator, Jeffrey Grosay, who's taking a much-needed rested vacation. You deserve it, you're awesome. I look forward to celebrating with you when you return. You kept us motivated, focused, and upbeat. I appreciate you. Most importantly, I want to thank Gaithersburg voters. I could not have done this without you believing in our vision. Not everyone sees the grueling work and sacrifice that goes into running a campaign. Thank you to all of the candidates, Mayor Ashman, candidates Jim McNulty, Yvette Monroe, and my new colleague, Mike Sesma, for their passion for public service, regardless of the outcome. They all ran great campaigns, and I am looking forward to working with each and every one of you. I'm really proud of my long record of community activism in the City of Gaithersburg. These experiences have prepared me well for continuing my service as a member of the Gaithersburg City Council. As we continue to grow, we must maintain the same quality of life that attracted us all to the great city of Gaithersburg, so our city will continue to thrive. Challenges in economic development, school overcrowding, affordable housing, environmental protections, transportation, and access to opportunity still remain ever-present and require effective leaders to help solve them. I'm committed to making a difference in our community, but I'll still need your help. Please continue sharing the ideas and concerns you have for our community. Together, we will make Gaithersburg the best place to live, work, learn, play, raise a family for generations to come. Thank you.
Well done, Loriann. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by thanking the Board of Supervisors of Elections for their work in administering this election, all the election judges and other volunteers, the city staff who were involved, as the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting tonight. They really make sure that the mechanics of these elections happen. And of course, elections are the bedrock of our democratic process, including here at the local level, which is why I want to say a special thank you to all the voters who showed up. For those who don't know, the voter turnout for this election was just under 10%. And that's an issue of concern, I think, for all of us. It is certainly not for lack of trying. All the folks who ran on the ballot this year will tell you it was not for lack of trying, and all of the staff and officials at the city will tell you it was not for lack of additional efforts to do outreach to get people to come out and vote. It's a challenge, certainly not just for Gaithersburg, but for municipal governments all over the place, particularly when they have elections in odd years. We just do what we can to draw attention to this. But for those who were involved, who reached out to your neighbors to get them involved just to make sure that people would go out and vote, we make it pretty easy here in the City of Gaithersburg to vote. Thank you for doing that. And let's continue that work to try and make sure that we encourage folks to come out and that we get a good turnout, because we need people to show up and have their voices heard. So thank you to all who did. Let me also take a moment to thank Yvette for her service and for the chance to get to know her as a colleague, for putting herself out there. As she said, all of us who have run for office know how difficult that is for the generous heart that she has and the clearly pure, untarnished desire to help others, along with her wonderful family. Clearly, it's a family affair with that family. And there's a reason why, Yvette, you were named the distinguished citizen of Gaithersburg. Thank you so much for your service to the city, and we know you're not going anywhere. Let me congratulate my friend, Mike, who I've had the honor to serve together with now for 10 years. We are the old timers on this council.
It's like a third of your life, Ryan.
It's crazy. It's crazy. But of course, I'm looking forward to continuing our work together and to advance the many causes about which we share a passion, from environment to affordable housing to smart planning, for which you, Mike, have been a leader and an inspiration, I think, for many of us, if not all of us. So congratulations again to you and to Joanie and your whole family. And finally, let me congratulate and welcome Loriann. Thrilled to have you here. I've gotten to know you over the years. We've actually run together in a number of campaigns now. Hard to believe. I've experienced during those campaigns in getting to know you and in your other involvement in activism how hardworking, determined, really tireless you are, smart, and clearly committed to community service. Looking forward to working together with you to serve the city in the collaborative, consensus-building fashion that has marked our government, made us productive, and distinguished us from some other unnamed bodies who are, shall we say, less collaborative and less productive. But congratulations to you and your family. It's clear that your faith is a source of strength, and that's a wonderful thing to celebrate tonight. And all of your family and supporters who are here, congratulations to them as well. We're very excited to add your passion and your energy to our team. So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, Ryan. Mike?
So Ryan challenged me to try and be shorter than him today, so... In terms of the length of my-
You're talking about height, right?
My thing, yes. So first of all, I want to begin by thanking the voters who showed their confidence in my service to the city, and I promise that I will try and live up to that confidence as I've tried to do since first being elected in 2005. It's been one of the most honored, it's been a great honor and humbling experience, but very rewarding as well. I want to congratulate my good friend and faithful companion, Judd Ashman, in terms of, on your own reelection, an election to a full four-year term. Clearly deserved. You've grown into this leadership as mayor, I think, in an amazing way. You had big shoes to fill. I think you've done a pretty good job. And we're looking for, I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you for your support. I want to also thank my colleagues, Ryan and Neil, for their very strong support for my reelection. And the friendship of everybody on the council. So I also want to thank the members of our delegation to Annapolis, Senator Kagan, Delegates Kumar, Barbe, Andrew Platt, and Jim Fieldcrisp for their support as well. So I want to congratulate Loriann on her historic, your historic election. I think it's important for people to know that. It's historic. Mike?
When I was elected in 2005, I was the first minority to be elected, minority person to be elected to the City Council. The first Hispanic. I'm still the only, only one of two Hispanics serving on a, in those 12 years, serving on a city government in one of the most diverse counties in the United States, 17 municipalities. That's, we have to do something about that. But I think what we have now is a very diverse-
But I think what we have now is a very diverse and representative council, more so than any other city in this diverse county, so it's important to recognize that. I know all of us are looking forward to having you join us in working together to advance the interests of Gaithersburg and its residents, to make this, continue to make this a great city to live, work, learn, play, raise a family, and everything else you said. It's the quality of life that people expect us to maintain, and that's what we're going to do. I want to thank my friend, Yvette. It's been an honor to work with you these past months. I know Gaithersburg will continue to benefit from your service, your commitment to Gaithersburg, and it was, it was great to work alongside you. Thank you to Jim McNulty for running a spirited and inspired campaign. I think the best thing that we can say about this election, that it was a, it was a pretty up-and-up election. I think clearly we had four very qualified candidates. I'm including myself in that group, so... And I know, for some people, it was a hard choice. I think, I think you made the right choices for the most part, so, you know, we're ready to move on and we're ready to get to work. So, in any campaign, there are many individuals that we each need to thank. I think we first need to thank each other, the candidates, for the kind of campaigns we ran. And certainly for me, I had a number of people that stepped up and supported us. Nobody could do this alone. But first and foremost is the, is my wife, Joni. She has agreed to share me with the city for 12 years now and another four. I think the city owes Joni a debt. None of us could do this without the commitment from our families, our children, our closest family, and then our extended family, our neighbors and friends, so I want to thank you all for that. So, as a council, we have opportunities and challenges. I think Loriann has already stated some of those. I don't need to list them again. Gaithersburg is already a great American city. We hear about it all the time, especially when the mayor begins a speech. It's a tradition here, greatest city in the world. I'm committed to make sure that, to working to maintain that status, to turn those challenges into opportunities. We have lots of work to do. I'm always ready to get to work, so let's do it. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not my spotlight tonight, so I'm gonna keep it brief. Thank you to the Board of Elections. You did a wonderful job. I tried to stop by each of the polling places to say hello and to say, to thank each of you for that long, 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 grueling day. I don't know how you do it, but we couldn't do it without you.
That was not a signal to you, Rob.
It's the music that I'm placing. I'll echo the thanks to the voters. Local elections matter, and we had just under 10 percent turnout as Ryan intimated, but, you know, local governments are the closest to the people and the government that most impacts the daily lives of each of us, so we have to think about ways to increase turnout and engage voters so that they're interested in what our city does. Yvette, Yvette, I just wanted to say thank you for being you. It's been wonderful getting to know you. Prior to both my election and your election to the council as well, we got to know each other, and, you know, I can say nothing other than thank you for being you, and I look forward to working with you, continuing as we go into the future. I'll echo Mike's comment. I think the voters mostly got it right. Thank you, Loriann. Congratulations. And congratulations to Jen, and Mike, congratulations to you as well. You know, we don't always see eye to eye, but I respect you, and I look forward to working with you in the years to come. Finally, congratulations, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is a big time. You know, you, you were filling in for the shoes of Council Mayor Katz, who's in the audience here tonight, and we firmly entered the Judd Ashman era, and I'm, I'm very happy and excited to see what's to come.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, Neil's not here, so I got the last one. I am grateful beyond all words to the voters for entrusting me with another term as mayor of the greatest city in the world. What a, what a fantastic honor it is to serve you and to serve in general at this moment in American history. I pledge to do my very best to live up to your trust and strive to make you proud every day. Congratulations once again to our longest-serving council member, my great friend, Brother Mike Sesma, and now our newest, Loriann Sales, who ran a tremendous, tremendous campaign. I look forward to the next four years and the dynamic that we all establish in, here at the dais, working for the people of Gaithersburg. Jim McNulty and Yvette Monroe, you both ran terrific campaigns, campaigns to be very proud of, and our city is the better for your service and efforts. Where is Jim? Okay, okay, I'm obscured because of the pillar here. Just want to make sure he's locked in here. Okay. So, you know, I, I think all of us see both of you playing important roles in the future of our city. My race this time was uncontested, a fact for which I'm quite grateful. That said, I would never take this opportunity for granted, and I spent the campaign working quite hard to get out there and connect with voters and with, just with residents in general. There are a number of people who stood by me and/or worked by my side and deserve great thanks. Like everybody else, it starts with my family, wife, kids, parents, brother, sister, stepsister, nieces, cousins, et cetera. Their support means more than I can say. My political right-hand man this year was Jeffrey Hines. Jeffrey, raise your hand. This was, this was Jeffrey's first real commitment to a campaign in our city, and I'm so grateful that he chose mine. I couldn't ask for a better, more reliable partner.
Good odds, too. He had good odds for his first campaign.
He had good odds. Well, you know, he, to be fair, he jumped into it before knowing it was uncontested, so... He would have been there for a fight, but it was cool, it was cool. I want to thank Stacy Simon, whom I affectionately refer to as my campaign wife, my longtime friend and collaborator, Tom McQuiggin, Mike and Joni Sesma, of course, Yvette and John Monroe, Danny Windborn, Becky Malone, Sidney A. Katz, Ernest Miller, Demetria and Manny Sementeris, and everyone who worked the polls for me in that cold, ridiculous pouring rain last Tuesday. Special shout-out to the Jim McNulty team for putting up canopies at the polls and sharing them with everyone, because that was awesome. That was terrific. So, I mean, all said, I'm grateful to everyone who's supported me, donated to the campaign, offered words of encouragement, voted for me, inspired me, was a courteous driver in this city, all, anybody, I'm thankful. I think I've said before, you know, during a campaign, you're often like physically surrounded by people, but it's actually a lonelier endeavor than you might think. So, for any candidate, those acts of support are the fuel that really keep us running. Now, I dare say, one of the reasons why city council races, including this one, are so hard-fought and competitive is because this is a very desirable body to serve on. Why? Well, among other reasons, the people of Gaithersburg, of course, inspire us. Our city staff do fantastic work and routinely make us look good, and the Gaithersburg Mayor Council have a long track record of working together in a remarkably effective manner, getting big things done for our community. The Gaithersburg Council, I would say, sets the bar for just how productive and collegial a governing body can be. And the last part, that last part didn't happen by accident. There are certain ingredients that are baked into that recipe. We have a process that gives everyone a voice. We work together to tweak ideas and plans in order to get the best possible solution. We practice civility, and in the face of differing opinions, we can disagree without being disagreeable. We promote the long-term health of the city rather than succumb to the periodic temptations to score short-term political points. In 2014, I was handed this tradition by my predecessor, Sidney A. Katz, as he was handed it by his predecessor 16 years earlier. I am committed to preserving and nurturing it because I believe it's a big part of our very identity here in Gaithersburg. So, I'm gonna close with some thoughts that I try to carry with me in, every day, and I've put them in the, in the form of a benediction for all of us here at the dais, and here, so here's how it goes. May all who serve at this dais appreciate the opportunity to be part of our proud Gaithersburg tradition, listen to each other with empathy and respect, study the issues before us with the thoroughness that our city deserves, act in good faith, and assume the good faith of our colleagues, and most of all, enjoy the role that you play and we all play in bringing about our collective successes. I'm really looking forward to working with, with everybody here at this dais. Thank you all very much. And with that said, the next regular meeting of the Mayor Council, which everybody's invited to, is next Monday, November 20th, 7:30 PM, right here, and until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.
All right.